Right.
I'd like to call to order the policy subcommittee meeting and a committee, the whole meeting, roll call please.
Mr. Ford.
President.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Sadoway.
Present.
And observing, Mr. Cassianus, Ms. Capola, Ms. Gately, and Mayor McGee.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, and that's coming from the mayor's office who I think has some recommendations.
I do have some recommendations, and I know some information. I just want to make a point. I know some information came today. It was part of the information that was necessary to approve this. We did have, and I'll go through the history of this, but I just want to make sure that everybody got that. And typically, the information is well ahead of time, so it was because the information was made available at the period of time which allowed us to get it to you was when we got the information. So I just want the committee to know that's the information that should be made available. So, we, the City of Lynn's been working towards completing the criteria to apply for our Green Communities designation with the State Department of Energy Resources. To be designated, the city must meet five designation criteria. And if we all remember, the school committee was given a presentation on this effort at the March 11th meeting, 2019 meeting, by Neil Duffy.
Yes.
Once designated, Lynn will receive a designation grant of approximately $500,000 to be used on energy conservation measures at city facilities. Lynn will also become eligible to participate in Green Communities' annual competitive grants of up to $250,000. Currently, 240 of the 351 municipalities in Massachusetts are green communities. The criterion, one of the criteria, number four, is fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy. The city would commit to purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles, vehicles that meet the miles-per-gallon standard set by the Green Communities Division, and that's when we're replacing vehicles in existing inventory, when we're replacing vehicles. The policy does not require replacement of vehicles. It simply sets an efficient fuel economy standard for when vehicles are being replaced. Emergency and heavy-duty vehicles are exempt from the policy, and according to the vehicle inventory, the schools currently have six vehicles. Two are exempt, heavy-duty. The other four, two Ford Crown Victorias and two Ford Taurus, would be subject to this policy when the time comes for them to be replaced. The city has already adopted the policy, so the last remaining step would be for the schools to do the same. So, as the presentation in March, I think spoke to, even though we've been working on the city side to establish all of these policies with ISD and others in the city, obviously, the schools will be impacted as part of that. So, as the city has adopted it, it's also up to us as a school committee to also adopt it. That's why we're here tonight. The criterion number three, energy use baseline and energy reduction plan. This is some of the information you received today. Requires the city to create an energy use baseline, which is FY18, which accounts for the entire city and schools' energy use, which is what we've been working on and putting together that plan. We then create an energy reduction plan, which is before you today, to reduce that baseline energy use by 20% over five years. This is simply a goal. The projects included in the energy reduction plan are subject to being awarded grant funding. We will become eligible for this through the designation process. Additionally, if new or different projects arise after adoption of the plan, they can be included as part of our grant application. Most of the benefits of becoming a green community will likely go to the schools. Lynn's plan is still in draft form, but currently identifies approximately $23 million worth of potential projects that would save an estimated $1.83 million per year. Of these, an approximate $18 million is for the school buildings, providing estimated savings of $900,000 per year. Green Communities requires that Lynn establishes an energy use baseline and identifies a pathway to achieve a 20% reduction from that baseline. Again, they don't hold the city to any of the projects identified, and there is no financial commitment being made by the city or the schools by adopting this plan. Additionally, projects not identified in this plan can still be applied for through the Green Communities designation and grant program. All projects that Lynn has identified are all viable projects that would improve our building systems, infrastructure, and to save the city significant sums of money on an annual basis. Again, this is the last step. The deadline is next Friday for us to accept this. We had the presentation in March. We haven't been intimately involved in producing the plan, but ISD and others that work with us on many of the school projects that were related to the buildings have been very involved in this process. So, I'm asking that we adopt this tonight. Again, I think it's a great, great for us to get into the Green Communities designation. Again, as I stated in the comments I made, we have an ability to save money both for the city and for the schools. I think it's a great thing for us to move forward on. And at this point, it's up to the committee to adopt it, and then we'll be, have finished what our requirements are to move forward on this.
Any questions? Mr. Sadoway?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that at the previous presentation, it was pretty clear that this would be beneficial to the schools and to the city. We've been pushing, I think, for the past two years for grant money because it's great to get that. And I think that this goes along with what Ryan and everyone at this table has said over the past couple of years, and I make a motion to approve and send it to the full committee.
And just to be clear, that's the fuel-efficient vehicle policy and the City of Lynn energy reduction plan?
Correct.
Okay. So, we got a motion. Is there anyone seconding it?
Second.
All right.
Is that recommended to the full committee?
Yes.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Lynn Community Health Center contraception availability. And just to remind everyone where we are on that, that was a proposal that the Lynn Community Health Center presented to us in last spring. We sent some follow-up questions to them over the course of the following months, and they came back and had a follow-up presentation where they answered a lot of our questions and engaged in back-and-forth on that. And then, we wanted to get parent feedback and community feedback, which obviously, we are doing this evening. Before we can do that, this subcommittee needs to move their proposal to the full committee. And we also are going to hear from the Lynn Community Health Center team, just to reiterate their proposal in the subcommittee meeting before we move forward. So, would Lynn Community Health Center...
Hello, Dr. Mahania. I'm the CEO of the Community Health Center, and I want to thank the school board for inviting us up here once more. Linda Gallagani and Julie Chan will be doing the three-to-four-minute presentation. The only thing I wanted to emphasize for a lot of people for whom the Health Center is maybe the first time that you're hearing about us. So, we provide care to 42,000 of the Lynn residents, so we take care of about half the city that are in. We are present in about, we're present in 17 of the schools. So, last year, we did about 9,000 visits on the medical side and about 20,000 visits on the behavioral health side. Lynn is one of the only cities in the state where you actually have psychiatrists and psychiatric NPs being able to provide psychopharmacology to kids who are in need. We also, obviously, are providing therapy and medical visits. So, I just wanted to give the context that even though we're talking about birth control and family planning, this is not really our, sort of, our core business, right? Our core business is taking care of the whole family. Taking care of the whole family. And so, in terms of the schools, they will be presenting what we do. The other thing to know is that, in terms of baseline, parents have to authorize that their kids come see us. So, if a parent doesn't like what we do, all they have to do in the beginning of the year is say, "We don't want our kid to see the school-based Health Center," and they don't have access to us. We provide a professional level of care. We're credentialed by both the state and the federal level, and it is a full medical team that works in the schools. We have over 50 employees of ours that are serving your students and your community in the schools. So, Linda and Julie?
Good evening. So, my name is Linda Gallagani, and I'm the team lead, the medical team lead for the School-Based Health Center program. And I actually started my career at Lynn Community Health Center by being the nurse practitioner at Breed Middle School. The School-Based Health Center program at Lynn Community Health Center has been in existence for 28 years. It actually started because a nurse practitioner from Lynn Community Health Center was at Lynn Tech one day a week doing, providing some education to the students, and a student went into labor during school. And they called on that nurse practitioner, who was actually certified as an OB-GYN nurse practitioner, to assist that student and got her in an ambulance, and the baby was delivered safely. And that was when Lynn Public Schools and Lynn Tech asked us to have more of a presence in the school. So, we currently have what we call eight full-service School-Based Health Centers in the Lynn schools. When I say full service, I mean we have behavioral health counselors, people with the ability to prescribe medications for, like, depression and attention deficit disorders, and medical nurse practitioners. The medical nurse practitioners, as Dr. Mahania said, provided over 9,000 visits in the last school year. We immunized over 1,300 kids last year and gave over 3,000 immunizations, which allowed kids not to be left out of school because they weren't fully immunized. The nurse practitioners, although tonight's subject is birth control, the nurse practitioners provide full primary care service to the students in the School-Based Health Centers. They are the primary care providers for many of those students. The purpose of the School-Based Health Center program is to provide medical care and behavioral health care in the place where kids spend the most time, and to provide them access. It's an alternative for parents who can't maybe get their kids to the PCP because either they have other children at home obligations and can't get to a regular PCP office during normal business hours. And I think we would all agree that kids who are mentally and physically healthy are more likely to succeed in school, and I think that's what we all want. We all want the kids in the Lynn Public Schools to be successful in school and then above and beyond school. The nurse practitioners do regular yearly physicals. They clear the kids for sports. They immunize kids. They see kids for acute visits, meaning strep throat, stomach bugs, fevers, headaches. They're able to do some point-of-care testing, meaning they can test the kids for strep throat. They can write prescriptions. They manage chronic illness such as diabetes and asthma. And they provide nutrition counseling, weight loss and weight management counseling, and they provide counseling about healthy living and healthy relationships. And so, I'm going to let Julie talk a little bit more about the care that we provide to the kids and what we're asking of the school committee tonight.
Hello again. For everyone else in the room, my name is Julie Chan. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner with Lynn Community Health Center. My home base is Lynn Tech, where I am the nurse practitioner at the School-Based Health Center there. I've been there for about seven years now. As to recap what we have gone through before, we are asking the school committee for permission to hand out birth control and contraceptives in the School-Based Health Center. As it currently is, students are allowed to come and seek care for their physicals and their sick visits and their immunizations, but also, when they come and ask us for further care in their own reproductive health care, or they have questions about reproductive health care, we are only currently allowed to educate them and send them back to the main Health Center where they can get further services if that is needed. Every time that someone asks us for these things, it is a full medical visit. We are not handing out any birth control just simply because someone asks us. We do encourage them to talk to their parents first. We do believe that it is important that they involve their families and their primary care providers, especially if it's not us at Lynn Community Health Center, and their specialists, if they have specialists, if they have medical conditions, in their medical decision-making. In this decision-making process, we do emphasize that this is a medical decision that they are making and that they are doing, an adult decision, which means that they have to understand the adult consequences of these actions. So, in this, we go through their medical history, their medications, their family medical history as well. We go through the pros and cons of what they've decided, and we assess for a healthy relationship in this. Because if they are asking us for reproductive health care, we're first assessing for their safety. At all times, their safety is the first priority that we have, whether it's a healthy relationship that they have to making sure that they are not being coerced into doing something that they are not comfortable with, or they're not being guilted into doing something that they are not ready for. The conversation always starts with, what is a healthy relationship? Where are you learning about your relationships from? Are you learning them from your parents? Hopefully, that's where they're getting from. Or are you unfortunately learning from the television and movies and the internet? And so, we assess for that. The conversation is not a 15-minute visit. This is an hour-long, two-hour-long, several days that we go through this conversation with the kids for. We assess for safety. We assess for readiness. We emphasize abstinence when it is needed. We emphasize for abstinence as their first step in any sort of relationship, not only for themselves and for their own safety and health, but also for their self-esteem. It's so that they can learn when to know when they are ready, and it gives them more time to have a conversation with their partner and hopefully with their parents as well. When a child approaches us and they are already sexually active, that's when we feel that there is a need to keep them safe. They're already doing these things, and they're asking us for help to protect themselves from pregnancy or STDs. As presented previously, in the month of September alone of this year, there were 21 cases of chlamydia in the schools, 21 cases that could have been prevented had there been access to condoms. In this, in the last year, there were 57 pregnant minors in the Lynn Public School system, or in Lynn, in Lynn, and of which 12% were their second pregnancies. Again, access to birth control is what we're asking for in the School-Based Health Center. When we feel that there is a safety risk, we do contact the parents. We do involve the parents, even if the child does not ask us to whenever there is a safety risk and a safety concern. We do ask that they also involve their PCPs and their primary care providers and their specialists, and we will even sit there and help them call their primary care providers and their specialists. We will ask that they involve their parents, and we will sit there and call their parents. I have called parents this year maybe three or four times alone when a kid has asked me to help them talk to their parents about these services. And the parents come in, and we can all have a conversation together. We try to encourage all these things, because when we are encouraging these kids in school to be adults in a way, to do their homework, to come to school on time, to take responsibility for themselves, and we offer all of these things, and then tell them, "No, we are not allowed to give them to you," we are creating a roadblock for them. And it is unfortunate that this roadblock has led to cases of chlamydia and unwanted pregnancy. And so, we are trying to bring this within the schools as well. And again, parents can consent to opt-in to the School-Based Health Center program, and they can consent out of the School-Based Health Program as well.
Thank you. So, the committee now can decide to, the subcommittee can, we can decide to move this to the full committee and have this discussion at the committee level? We could accept now and recommend, but that's up to the, that's up to the committee now?
I'd like to recommend moving it to the full committee because we have so many people that are going to speak on behalf, that it should be moved until we have all the information.
And then, we can deliberate at the full committee. Okay.
I had questions, but you're saying that we should hold our questions till later on?
I think that might give us an opportunity to do it all at once, because right now, we're under a timed subcommittee meeting, and then we have it again on the agenda for the full committee, but...
Just one second. I just want to, when is it on the full committee? Because we have a lot of people.
It's under ratification of votes in the policy subcommittee.
Would be able to move it up so people aren't here the entire day, or at night?
If the committee agrees, that would be a question for the chair in the full committee.
That's, again, that's up to the committee to make a decision. We've done that in the past on certain issues, so.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
So long as...
Remember Gately? Does that sound...
Gately, yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, I second with this being brought up.
Okay, so the motion is to recommend the, or to move the Lynn Community Health Center contraception availability proposal to the full committee.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
All right, that's the end of our agenda of the policy subcommittee meeting. Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Adjourn.
Who?
Destiny Davis.
Destiny Davis.
Open mic session. We will take, we'll, this will be the final two. The, um, open mic session. We will now, um, prepare to go into the... Two minute break for the committee, and then we'll go into session.
Yeah, have to go. Can everybody move over and maybe make some seats?
Get the conversation out of the room. Allow us to begin the meeting, please. Thank you. Would ask that everyone stand and join us in saluting, uh, the flag. And then after that, I'd ask you also stay, stand, uh, remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask all to be, stay standing, please. And I'd like a moment of silence of, in memory of Alice Schuman, who was a cafeteria worker who passed away on October 24th, 2019. Thank you. First on the agenda is the minutes.
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the Building and Ground Subcommittee meeting on October 24th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, the minutes are accepted.
Like to make a motion that the force special meeting on October 24th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, minutes are accepted.
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting for committee of the whole meeting on October 26th, 2019.
Second.
Second. So second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is appointments and elections. Mr. Superintendent?
Yep, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, today we have two. Um, first, uh, is Jaclyn Fisher, who's been appointed the bilingual guidance counselor at Classical. I know she's, uh, done a wonderful job in an acting capacity, and I'm thrilled to see that she's been officially appointed.
Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity, and I'm excited to continue this important work. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Uh, the second is a nurse election. Uh, I respectfully ask for the committee's support, uh, in electing Serena Foley, uh, as a school nurse.
Make a motion to accept, uh, the school nurse selection for Serena Foley?
Second. Second, that requires a roll call.
Ms. Cassianas?
Serena Foley.
Ms. Capola?
Serena Foley.
Mr. Ford?
Serena Foley.
Ms. Gately?
Serena Foley.
Mr. Nicholson?
Serena Foley.
Mr. Sadoway?
Serena Foley.
Mayor McGee?
Serena Foley.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I do not think she's here. But we congratulate her.
Congratulate Serena. Next on the agenda is new business.
I make a motion...
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move, uh, letter G, uh, ratification of votes taken in the policy subcommittee. Fuel-efficient vehicle policy, uh, and energy reduction plan, um, in the Link Community Health Center services, uh, to the first item, um, on the new, under new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call required.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. So with that, I defer to the chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so we had two motions from the Policy Subcommittee. The first was to approve the fuel-efficient vehicle policy and energy reduction plan and recommend to the full committee.
Is there, is there a motion to accept?
Right.
Second.
Second.
Second. Uh, would roll call required on that?
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
The second motion was to move to the full committee the Link Community Health Center contraception availability proposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Roll call required.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is, um, request to extend and renew the, uh, signing of a lease agreement with the food project in the garden located at the Ingalls Elementary.
We brought it to the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Should I take it up? Before, before we do that, because, um, we have to get the signature signed for the, for the First Amendment, that's...
Great, let's do that.
So that's where I've been focused, but we will go to that once we...
Can we ask for them to come and sit for now?
That's up to the mayor, but yeah.
Okay. Tom? Can we have them come and sit now? The people from Link Community Health, can they come sit now?
Absolutely. Okay. So we would ask the, um, members of Link Community Health Center to come forward. There we go. Chairman Nicholson?
Uh, so yeah, so we have now moved the proposal to the full committee, and I believe that we had, uh, Members Sadoway had wanted to ask questions of the Link Community Health...
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. I could, I have ability to...
You have the floor.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you for coming and, um, presenting to us. I know that we've been discussing this issue since about April or March of this year, uh, over a few meetings. Um, so, um, I, I think that the, the big issue, and you probably agree with me, is the law as to where and when parental consent is needed is clear, but the school, the schools' involvement is not. So I think that we need more clarification on that. I think that today, for the first time, I learnt, because I was under the impression that this was open to all students and authorization was not needed, but today, um, I'm told by your organization that you actually need, uh, to be signed in in order to get the services from the Link Community Health Center.
So, in, in order to access the school-based health center services, we need parental consent on file. However, because of the confidentiality laws in Massachusetts, if students, um, students can't access services without parental consent, if it's regarding to, regarding pregnancy prevention, um, STI testing and counseling, then in that case, we don't need signed consent on file.
A parent earlier mentioned the mature minor rule, which I'm, I'm pretty sure you're aware of, which is, um, they can consent to medical treatments if you believe that the minor can give informed consent to treatment, and if you believe that it's in the child's best interest not to inform their parent. And you also referenced, I believe, which is Massachusetts general laws, uh, chapter 111 subsection 24E, which is about the family planning services that are, uh, allowed to any sexually active minors that are of childbearing age. So those are the two that you're relying on with not including the parents in this, uh, scheme of things, is that correct?
Can you clarify? So I'm not sure, the first one you mentioned, I mean, we don't treat children in school without parental consent unless it's covered under the, um, confidentiality laws. So, you know, um, a child has to have consent on file for any medical care other than what falls under confidentiality. So we don't treat, we don't treat mature minors. Um, they have to have consent on file.
Okay.
They're less than 18.
So it's the family planning part that you're saying that you're, you're moving forward under? Okay. Um, you know, parents have called me and they had brought up this emancipation thing, and, and it's really, that's really a status, but the mature minor is a rule, and that's not what you're dependent on. You're dependent... You're dependent on the family plan and exception, which is for any child that is of childbearing age. What I've been brought, that's been brought to my attention as well, is you speak very highly of the work that you do, and you articulate and you give us a great vision on what you do with each student. I want to make sure that that's either a policy or standard process, medical process, meaning you say that there's the assessment, there's the safety risk, there's the PCP calls, there's that. I'm glad that you do it, but I want to make sure that all nurse practitioners within the Lynn Community Health Center and our school-based services also do that, because it's important. So is this a policy, or is this just something that is standard in the medical professional that you do all those things?
So it's standard in the medical profession if you're prescribing any kind of medication, that you take, you know, a medical history, ask for allergies, ask for, you know, past medical history. It's not necessarily standard that the PCP is notified. If a child is accessing these services under the confidentiality laws, we encourage them to speak to their PCP. The nurse practitioner in the school may reach out to the PCP if it's a child with medical problems that we don't have enough history on, but I have to say that's not standard. We don't call every PCP for every child that we see in school.
And we do that with the child's permission because of the confidentiality laws. And so we, what we do is that we explain to the kids that your PCP should be notified. The classic example that we all do use is if you're in an emergency room and, you know, God forbid, something has happened, and they ask you, are you taking any medications? You do have to list these out. And so we use that as an example to illustrate why it's important to also notify their PCP and their specialist. And so when the child consents for us to help them reach out to the PCP, that's when we can do that. Sometimes the kids say, no, I want to be the one who does that, and we have to respect that as well.
My wife's nurse practitioner, her biggest concern at this point was, was that. So say you're on this medication, and there's a high risk of blood clots, and you're in an emergency, and no one knows that you're on it, that's, that's an issue. So how can, how can I get comfort in knowing that this information's gonna... Are we just gonna rely on the student to share that with people when they're in a medical emergency, and they probably are unresponsive, or, or just not thinking of that, to share?
So there are very few contraindications to birth control. If there's a child that has any kind of significant past medical history or questionable past, you know, questionable history that they're not able to elaborate on, then those children refer back to their PCP. Their PCP can also do what we do. They don't have to inform parents, they don't have to involve parents. I think the scenario you're talking about could be anybody, anybody could end up in the emergency room, unresponsive, and you won't know what medicines they're on. In this world, we have electronic medical records, a lot of practices share the same electronic medical records, so we can actually see a lot of what happens outside of Lynn Community Health Center. We can see immunizations, we can see medications, we can see problem lists, and so in many ways that has helped us. But if there's any question at all about a medical problem, then we would defer to the PCP, and with the child's permission, call the PCP and have that discussion. And that does happen if there's a concern.
Member Gately, then, member Nicholson.
Earlier I was talking with you, and I brought up about the same issue as attorney Sadoway. Is there any way we could put it in a policy or make it part of our Lynn Public Schools that you do contact the primary care provider to make sure there's no interactions? That's the big concern by a parent that sent us all this email, and it's very concerning to her because her child has allergies or doesn't respond very well to medication, and I don't know if, when you're providing these contraceptives, are you able to see what medications, the other medications the person is on, the child is on, and can you see if there's any interactions? I know that you already mentioned to me earlier for parents that you invite parents in to come in and talk, and also that, and I was happy to hear that you're not standing out with a bullhorn saying, come on in and get your birth control, okay? So you're not doing that. They're coming to you because they have already engaged, or they're possibly going to engage. So I want to make that clear to the parents. It's not something that they're promoting, it's not something they're saying. I know that students will hear it through word of mouth, but it's not them going out, it's the students wondering, gee, I'd like to, maybe I'd like this guy, or whatever. So I'd like to get that clarified for me on the interaction and how we can do a policy or make sure that our children are safe. Like, their parent, if anything ever happened to their child after taking a birth control in our city schools, I would be devastated, and so wouldn't all the parents in here want to kill me. But do you know what I'm saying? It's something I like to make sure that it's safe for our students.
So there's very few medicines that interact badly with birth control. Because we're seeing these kids under the confidentiality law, we cannot, without their permission, tell parents. We cannot, without their permission, call the PCP or the pharmacy. If there's, if there's a concern, because it's a law, if there's a concern with the child in the office with their verbal permission, we can talk to the PCP. We can call the pharmacy that they use and find out a list of medications, but they have to give us that permission. And again, I go back to, these are kids, we're not, we're not advocating, like you said, we're not out with a bullhorn saying, come one, come all, get your birth control. These are kids who are accessing us because they have questions and they have concerns, or they're thinking about doing something, and we, we have that conversation to have them think otherwise, but once they have already engaged, our role is to protect them.
I know over in PBD, they, they have this, they have contraceptives. So the parents, they do know they are using this, but every time a child uses a contraceptive, they go to the community health center, and every single time they're using, like, if they want another, a refill, or whatever, they have to come and interview and talk to you again to make sure that they're using it correctly, make sure that they're using the right dose. I want parents to know that, that they are checking on those things. I think, like, that's what's going on in PBD. I heard that from their health center. So can you just go over that? Like, what happens to a child, so people know?
If it's a, so the ones that would require refills would be oral contraceptives and Depo-Provera. And at both of these stages, they are required to come in to have a conversation, especially with birth control, with the oral contraceptive pills, because that's something they would have to take every single day. You know, another pregnancy test is run, another conversation is had, is this still the birth control you want? Is this still the best fit for you? And is there new medication that you're on? You know, that conversation is still had, or are there any new things that are occurring?
Any side effects?
Yeah, any side effects, yes. So whenever there is a refill one, then that is, that conversation does have, it's as if we're starting over.
Now, as far as condoms are concerned, I want everyone to know, like, people tend to have a vision that there's like a big bowl, you know, at the end of a counter, and kids come in and say, hey, I got a great weekend coming up, all right? I know I'm trying to make light of a heavy situation, but, so you have, you do not have a goldfish bowl full of condoms that people can just walk in freely and take.
No.
Can you go over that, if you wanted to add condoms?
So the idea, because it's not the Lynn Public Schools who is handing this out, so the whole bowl condom issue is also, would be a problem, because then it would be sort of out there like that. The idea is that they would have to have a visit to have a discussion, because again, assessing for healthy relationships, safety, consent, and if they're even ready for this sort of step, to have that conversation with them, that is this something you actually want to do, is abstinence actually the best choice at the end of this conversation on the road? And so even with the condoms, even if there's a bowl in the storage closet, it's not sitting out there for them to just grab at.
Thank you very much.
Member Nicholson, then, member Ford.
I can, Mr. Ford can go first.
Member Ford?
I just get one quick question, again, the same, same issue, drug interaction. I'm concerned, I know you said that, and birth control has very little possibility to drug interaction, but there's always that, that one instance, and you referred to medical records, and, you know, my wife and I just went and updated our prescription list, and they were out of date by seven to 10 years. So that's not, you know, a valid barrier, you know, and I think reaching out to the PCP somehow almost, almost has to be done, because, for the safety of the student.
So we do, and that's one of the reasons why we do encourage the kids to reach out to their PCP, and I can say that in my experience, that the kid has always said, yes, I do want my PCP to know, and they either, you know, call them in front of me while I'm sitting there with them, or they'll just go, you do it, I don't know how to say anything on the phone. And so, like, most, I haven't really had an interaction with a kid where they are against me reaching out to their PCP. Most of the time in Lynn Community Health Center, we are the PCP, it just happens to be, that's the way that sort of the bricks have fallen here in Lynn, and so on the outside, we do have the access to those records. And when they are the outside kids, we do encourage them, and I cannot recall a time in recent memory where a kid has declined that, because they understand that this is a big decision. And the kid who has a huge number of allergies and medical issues, I, I, that's when I do defer back to the PCP, and I push them back towards them and say, you know, I think this is better handled in-house with your PCP, who's, who will handle this over there. And so they would, might come to me for information, and then might go back to the PCP. And in those cases, I help them call their PCP as well to help them go back to their PCP and arrange that appointment.
You know, and for the most part, we're talking about healthy kids. You know, as we get older, unfortunately, we're on a lot of medications, but a lot of kids, you know, for the most part, aren't on a lot of medications that we would worry about. But anybody with a complicated medical history, if we have a nurse practitioner in the school, the school nurses often include the nurse practitioner, even if we're not their PCP, but for helping to manage those kids. And again, if it's anybody with any kind of complicated issues with, on many meds, or if the child really can't tell us a lot about the history, then that, that's a phone call to the PCP with the child's permission. But again, the key is we have to have the child's permission, we can't do it without their permission.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you, yeah. First a question, so you mentioned that the Lynn Community Health Center keeps a consent on file for the, the services that are non-family planning. Is that, is that document something with which you could obtain information about allergies or like, to find, to find out more? So you have a baseline of that information to start with?
So you mean on the consent itself?
Yeah.
It is.
So the consent itself, so there's multiple, multiple papers that we send home with kids. And so the consent itself does not have a list for allergies that they could put on there, it is currently just basic information. When the kids are then seen in the health center, in the school-based health center for the first time, we usually send home a paper that does ask for a medical history for the parents to fill out, because I don't have a parent there to talk to, and so that separate form can be filled out at that point.
So there's an opportunity for parents to communicate to the...
Yes, yes.
If a parent were worried about a particular interaction or allergy, that they would have that opportunity to relay that information to the health center.
Yes, and for instance, for a kid who has a sick visit, you know, if they have strep throat, we call the parents, you know, if we're sending a medication home, and we ask them first for any interactions and things like that. And so there's always an opportunity, an open door for them to call. And that brochure does have all of our phone numbers of the individual school-based health centers in there, so if a parent of a kid who's at Classical, they sign that form, they can see that they can call directly the line to the Classical School-Based Health Center and relay information. A lot of times, parents do call into the individual school-based health centers saying, hey, heads up, my kid has this allergy, they also have a cold today, can you grab them?
Yeah, so I mean, I just want to say thank you to the Lynn Community Health Center for coming tonight, and I'd also like to thank everybody here and everyone that spoke for sharing your voice. I mean, this is a really important issue, it can be a difficult issue, and we're, we're all better off from having heard everyone's perspective, so thank you all for coming. I think, from the, from the Lynn Community Health Center, I think we, at least I, I think of you as a real partner in the job of taking care of the students when they're at school, and taking care of their health and well-being, and I, we have a strong recommendation from, from the Lynn Community Health Center about how best to do that, based on what they're seeing, which is a, which is a high teen pregnancy rate, one of the highest in the state, tactics that our peers are doing in not just Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, but Revere, PBD, Chelsea, Everett, Salem, and also backed by Public Health Day Day about the effectiveness of this. And I think it's, it's helpful to hear about how this is, is part of a comprehensive curriculum about, about health and safety and healthy relationships, which is really important. And then it's always given with, with, by trained professionals that are doing it with thoughtful counseling and advice. Like I said, I do appreciate all the feedback we've gotten. One of the pieces of feedback that I saw this week that I, that I thought was really helpful was of something about the Lynn Community Health Center presentation, and I think something that can be hard with these issues is that you're trying to communicate information, a lot of complicated information, quickly and boil it down, and, you know, there was a bullet point in that presentation about the, the impact that teen pregnancies can have, or that, you know, and I think, we got some feedback about that, the fact that teen pregnancies aren't always bad, and, and it's not always bad for the, the child, for the teen. And I think, I really do believe, and I think everyone here believes, that with the right support, and we've seen this tonight, with the right support, teen parents can thrive and contribute so much to our community. And so, if, at least from my perspective, it's not, it's not about that, it's about those teenagers that have made a decision based on thoughtful guidance that they want to try to prevent a pregnancy. And I think we all share the goal of helping our students make, make self and safe and healthy choices that are the best for them, and so I just, you know, I wanted to say thank you, everybody, who contributed tonight.
Member Sadoway, then, member Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have some, some other follow-up questions. So what information are you providing to these teens that are, are coming for your services? Are, you know, obviously the National Campaign to Prevent Teen and Unplanned Pregnancy is a great organization, are we sharing this information with the students that, that talks about enjoying their teen years and becoming prepared to make informed relationship decisions and stuff like that? Because sex is an adult thing. It comes with emotions, it comes with baggage, it comes with a lot of different things. So what information, as a, as a healthcare school-based, are we sharing with, with the kids to go home with possibly, and to possibly talk to their parents with?
So are you asking for a specific website?
Yes. Do you, do you have something listed on the front door, inside the...
So when, because this is, again, a conversation that we're having with them, we are, and I agree, sex is an adult activity, and that is the first thing I say. If you are choosing to do this adult activity, you have to make adult decisions, which means that you have to have awkward conversations with your parents, with your significant other, and yes, sometimes your PCP, and that is part of that conversation. When they want, if you're asking about specific websites that I talk to them about with, I use kidshealth.org, because that has a section for parents to click on, a section for kids to click on, a section for educators and teens. So it has for like, across the ages, if you will, and that they can, and it is in English and in Spanish, so that they can go home and talk about this, and they can get more information.
Kidshealth.org?
Dot org, yeah, kidshealth.org, and sometimes I'll print out handouts from that website as well.
And I was emailed probably a thousand articles from newspapers around the country where parents are upset that their kids are implanted with things without their consent or, or knowledge, and they get sick. This article that someone sent me is talking about something that was injected into the arm, and it was done incorrectly, and the person got really sick. Are we doing, are we...
We're not doing NEXPLANs or IDs in the school-based health centers. What we're requesting are condoms, Plan B, birth control pills, and Depo-Provera, which is more like, it's, it's kind of like a vaccine, you know, like, it's a liquid, it's a, it's like a vaccine, an immunization, kind of.
So if someone came to you and they wanted to do something like that, you wouldn't have the authorization, because that's not what you're asking for us to approve today?
Right, that's not going to be done in the schools, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, we're going to be taking a vote, and I'd like to explain where I'm coming from. I'm the father of four daughters. I take this very seriously, give it a lot of thought. A gentleman over there said sex education should be discussed in the home. I absolutely agree with that, but it's not. It's not being discussed in the home. And those are the kids we're worried about. You know, the young lady over there's a sophomore who had no talk at home about sex, and then she got pregnant. I mean, those that, when I get elected to the school committee, those are the people I'm supposed to be representing, and I'm not supposed to just be representing certain kids, all the kids. And if I can keep one pregnancy from happening, that's how I'm going to vote. And I applaud the parents that turned out tonight. This is a great turnout, and I can see a lot of, it's a lot of family people here tonight that, that really care about their kids, love their kids, and want to do the best for them. But some of the kids in this city need help. They're not getting it at home, even if they brought it up. I mean, I, I had two wonderful parents, great parents, and I got most of my sex education down at Berry Park. So that's where I'm coming from. And if these kids are getting into playgrounds, that's not the right place to get it, they're not getting the right information, I think they're doing a hell of a lot better at Girls Inc. I think they're doing a hell of a lot better at Girls Inc.
Dr. Tutwiler, if you would.
Yeah, yeah, sort of a, a quick break for, for an introduction before he speaks. By statute, all school committees in the state of Mass are supposed to have a student representative. And we rotate our student representative between the high schools and the city. And it just so happens that today is the first day for Bellaji Odu-Sanya, who's a senior at Lynn Classical. And a distinguished gentleman who is plugged into the school system in every way. And we're proud to have him be a part of this. Thank you.
And, and we will go to a new, a new member.
Good evening. My name is Bellaji and I just quickly wanted to voice my opinion. If we're going to be honest here, and let's face the facts, it's going to hurt parents, but if you think you're going to withhold your kids from having sexual intercourse, you're deceiving yourself. Because it's, especially the kids that you don't expect to do it are the ones that are curious to know about it. And I'm going to use myself as an example. I've been an A/B student, I'm class president all four years, football captain. I'm a kid someone never thought would have a kid. And I had my son my end of freshman year. I was 15 when I had my son. And it was tough growing up in a Nigerian home, very strict, you know, strict parents who, who never went to, who never finished high school, who never feel, you know, finished college. They want their kid to represent their family, you know, be good and, because they sacrificed a lot for me. And to kind of disappoint them in that way really, really hurt. And I had wished that I knew a way to kind of prevent that. So I really want the parents to know, I know you're saying, no, my daughter knows better than that, I raised her better than that. My parents thought the same exact thing. They never spoke to me about sex because I'm the last of five. None of my siblings ever had a child young, so they expected me to know not to do that. But at the same time, they were putting a lot of responsibility on me and expecting way too much of me at a very young age. And that led to me going to other sources to find out certain education on sexual intercourse and other things. My parents never went to school in America, so they don't know what my friends are telling me, what the schools are teaching me, what I'm seeing when I'm in school, excuse me, when I'm in school and what my friends are engaging in. You know, they don't know what goes on within, within America in general. So a lot of parents are here, Lynn is a very diverse city, that also there's many parents in this room that never went to school in America, that, you know, they expect their kids to know as much as well. Don't be that parent that was like mine. Now, my parents loved me, I'm not trying to say anything condemning them. And they did raise me very good, but at the same time, they did expect too much of me. When they found out I was having a child, they handled it appropriately, more appropriately than I expected because they knew on their part, they didn't do their part. And they knew they never educated me, they nev, they never spoke to me about it. I had no idea about it. And that's really where I wanted to let you guys know about that tonight. Don't think your kids know what to do because like the gentleman said before, their brains are still, you know, developing. If you're expected, you're expecting your child to know not to have sex at this age, you're, you're really deceiving yourself. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Member, Member Capola, then Member Castellanos, then Member Sadoway.
It's a hot act to follow. For the last 22 years, I have been a case manager to a teen parent program. I'm very proud of Adriana and Destiny who came and spoke today and shared very personal information that, about theirselves and their predicaments. And I have to say that in all this time, this is something that we've really needed to have. We can't go year after year and have these rates of teen pregnancy. So it is really, really important. I'd love to be out of a job and we have no teen pregnancy and that would, that would be fine by me. There's another piece that we had in the Lynn Public Schools and it was something where the students, both the fathers and the mothers of, of children, who had children, would go into assemblies at the middle schools and at the high schools. It was called the Roadshow. And Adriana went on the roadshow and you could hear a pin drop with these students. The person has retired that did it and nobody has replaced her. And I just hope that, you know, I, I support this wholeheartedly, so my vote will be for that. But I also hope that the Lynn Public Schools goes back to putting the roadshow together again and finding somebody who will guide these mums along to be speakers at, for the other students, whether it's middle or high school. Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
I want to start by thanking the, the teen health ambassadors that showed up today to share their stories and testimony. I think it takes a lot of courage to come up in front of adults and such a tough issue to talk about. I got the chance to meet many people from both sides. And it's definitely one of those situations where it's, it's very uncomfortable for some people to really go out and talk about it. The Destiny Davis testimony was very powerful to me. It hit me right in my heart. As a student choice is something that I, I've advocated on my campaign. As someone who's an elected official, I really ran on student voice and to really be there for students in whatever way I can. And also for the parents. I believe parent prevention and engagement is vital and to, to, to bridge these two not in support and, and those who support it, it's, it's very, we see the conflict. So I just want to let you know a little bit about my background. I had a sister who was a teen mom. My, and not to say, I had fathers and siblings, brothers who were teen fathers. So I got to see it from many perspectives. And it's something that made me very aware of, of, of the hardship that young teens who have children face when they are faced with this adversity. And a lot of the time, as, as I prepared myself for tonight, I was not ignorant to knowledge and I reached out to both sides very, very, very relentlessly. And my sister reached out and to, and really highlighted the fact that she is not a failure. As a matter of fact, she thrived as a teen parent and she challenged herself and, and really became a success. I have a niece who's graduating Framingham State University. She went to crim, she went my route in life. She actually is a aspiring social worker, criminology, Framingham State, just like I was. I don't have children, but I had nieces as kids and people I had to babysit because I was a parentified child for my sisters. And the conversations weren't held in my home because of hardships that we face socio-economically. I had family members who had to work full-time, multiple jobs just to make ends meet. So the school was the first pit stop for my family and my siblings to understand that, 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 that issue. It's something that is so important to really hear when we look at situations that, you know, like current line came in and said parents should opt in and not opt out. It's, it's vital to hear that perspective as well. That's why it's so important to not just leave this forum today as we all vote tonight, but to continue this conversation because this is ongoing and that we have to actively work together to bridge the confusion and the conflict. Because if we go and put each, go against each other, we won't get nothing done. We need to mobilize together to educate, to prevent. So we allow these, these, these different challenges that we face today to, to be resolved and to look and to going back to, we had a, a teacher, an English instructor, she pointed out the fact that decisions to be made during the school and the mature minor rule, and I agree, I think put in hormones and those, when we look at the research, that is something that held me up during my decision-making process. Because I think parents should be informed of these different medical decisions that are being made. And it is scary. There's lots of trauma involved from both sides. So, I'm not done. So we have fam, sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, so we have families that are, are both experiencing visual traumas. You have family members who go through it and family members who are trying to prevent this. So what are we going to do? What is the Lynn Community Health, School-Based Health Center going to do to engage both sides?
So I think it's a challenge for all of us and I think we do it one student at a time. You know, one student at a time who comes in and asks for these services, the nurse practitioner sits down and educates them and has a long discussion and encourages them to go back to their parent. Some do and some don't, but I think it's, you know, one student at a time, one family at a time. And, you know, hopefully along the line, preventing sexually transmitted infections and, and pregnancies. It's a difficult topic. You know, I was the nurse practitioner at Breed Middle School when I first started at Lynn Community Health Center. And I put, you know, a 14-year-old girl on birth control and the mother called me screaming and yelling and I understood. I in no way disregard parents' opinions or parents' rights. And this mother was very, very angry, but when she really stopped and listened to what I had to say, that I was afraid that this 14-year-old girl was going out and having sex and I was afraid she was going to get pregnant and I was afraid she was going to get a sexually transmitted infection, the mother thanked me. You know, the mother said, thank you for doing that. I was really angry with you and I found the pills and I was very upset, but now I understand what you did and it was for the safety of the child. So I think it's one family at a time, one kid at a time.
Member Sadoway.
Thank you.
And then Member Gailey.
Growing up, I always laughed at my annual physical when Dr. Natali asked me if I was, if I was sexually active. But unlike me, my brother was a teen parent. And he actually went through Donna Capola's program at Joy Daycare and he had two kids, 15 and 16 years old. My nephew Isaiah's in college now and my niece Ava is in China studying abroad in high school. That's a success story because the parents had the resources that they needed. Their lives would have definitely been very different had they not gotten pregnant at such a, such a, a young age. What I, my biggest issue, and I, I hope we can get this somehow resolved, is I, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of what, what we're going to offer in our schools. Okay? So I know Jared had asked about the consent form. Is there a possibility to update that to include current medications and allergies that these kids have? And also just advising parents and guardians that you will now be offering family planning services and what that entails, just so they're aware of the possibility that their kid might do these, get these services. I want it, I want to be as transparent as possible. Okay? Informative parent, informative guardian, there could be, be no wrong to that. And again, you're not saying that they're getting these services, you're saying this is what we offer. Okay? So heaven forbid I get, my daughter's in middle school. She's 11 years old, sixth grade at Pickering. That, you guys have a school-based health center? So it's just for high schools?
We don't have one at Pickering.
Okay. Okay. But heaven forbid she went to Breed and she's 11 years old. I, I want to make sure, if I get, if I get something sent to me from the school that says, hey, we offer planning service, family services, and this is what this entails, I'm going to sit her down and say, hey, let's, let's have a chat. Okay? So I'd like there, if we, if we, if we need to make it a policy, okay, but I want the consent form to be updated to include, again, the current medications and allergies the student may have and the fact that you offer these family planning services. And the law is the law with regards to, to the confidentiality behind that. And I want to end, after you answer that question, just by explaining again what you already do with these students and why you're asking for the change. Thank you.
So it does say it. So the consent forms does say the, the health, the family planning portion of it. It does have the healthcare part of it.
We don't have a copy of it to see, so if we can have it.
Yep. So that, so it, it is actually already on the, the consent form that gets sent home. It has sick visits, well visits, vaccines, and it does have the family planning portion on it. Obviously not for the elementary school one.
If I can just have a, a copy of what you send?
I can send, I don't have one now, but we can send it. No problem.
Member Gailey.
I'd like to thank you.
Sorry, you didn't answer the second question.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
What you already do with the students and what you want to change.
Okay, so we all, from everything? Like physicals?
No, 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 just with regards to this.
Sorry. Sorry.
Yes.
So yes, so as far as the family planning portion of things, it does, we provide education regarding reproductive healthcare, healthy relationships. We talk about if they do want it, you know, as I said before, we go through the pros and cons of all of it. We go through the entire, honestly, we go through the entire reproductive healthcare system, how your body works and how this medication works inside of your body and where it interacts at what point in time to help them understand truly, literally, how this medication works. I'm pretty sure that I go through that much more thoroughly than my doctor has ever gone through any medication with me. We can, we can have a whole lesson here. But we also talk about if they do want any of these things, there's a prescription that is sent to the pharmacy or they have to go to Lynn Community Health Center to either pick up a prescription and have an extra visit over there or get whatever birth control it is that they, they request over there.
And I just, is this, is this the form that you're talking about?
Is that the most updated one? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we updated it this year and we haven't gotten it back from the printed, but there's not a lot of changes in that.
Well, it just doesn't really emphasize what we're, I see some things that are in there. It says pregnancy counseling and referral for STDs. If we can really like make it obvious as to the family planning services, it'd be, be great. Because this is, it's just jumbled.
Clear.
Thank you.
Member Gailey.
So the reason why we had this meeting postponed and brought here on this day was to have transparency so parents could come and listen and hear what the teen health center had to say and the teen health center could, you know, communicate and listen to parents' concerns. I, I have been very torn with this issue. It's very difficult for me, but I do represent the parents and I also represent the students. And I have a very strong faith, but I have to do what I feel is the best for the students. And I really appreciate the Community Health Center coming out and speaking like they have. I really appreciate pregnant moms coming out and speaking as they have all the students from Girls Inc. and I, all the parents. And I really hope that this continues, this conversation about birth control, what it is. And it's going to be a tough one, but I thank you for coming and I truly appreciate your input. And Lynn's going to be in a very good place with all these parents inputting with their students. And thank you.
Member Nicholson.
I was going to say something really quick, based on building on what Attorney Sadoway and Ms. Gailey said. We, when, we've, we've had several meetings on this now and one of the things we've talked about is this is, this is a process that we're going through. And I think, you know, wherever we end up, we can, we can continue that process and build on that momentum. We can have a separate question about how we roll out whatever the policy is, how we engage parents so that we empower them to have the conversations that they want to have with their, with their students and give them those tools. And so I, I know that my, that, that's something we can build on, I think we should, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. And I worked with Donna Capola. It's been a long time. I was, and I think what got me really involved working with Donna, not because she was from Lynn and we worked together when I was in the legislature, I was in the House of Representatives. We, Donna was at an event for, I think it was on Hunger. I think it was a Hunger event that we were at. And we were, so we were sitting and, and we actually sat at the same table and I think my twins were 18 months at the time. So it had to be 1999, around 1999. And so we're at the table and Donna had a chance to introduce me to a young lady who was 17 and had an 18-month-old daughter, same age as my children, and had been a student at Lynn Classical and at that time was homeless because she, her, no one was supporting her. She had to leave the school because she had had the child and she was really without support at that point. And it really struck me very strongly knowing that my children were home and had two parents and that we were able to support those children. So subsequent to that, I got myself very involved in teen parenting legislation and Teen Parent Day, which was created. And I think the first year we had it, we had about 50 teen parents. That grew to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of teen parents that would come to the State House every year and bring their stories, tell us what they were facing, the challenges they faced. And so I was a, a strong advocate for supporting teen parents in legislation, but also in prevention of pregnancies. So for over 20 years in the legislature, I had a chance to really understand and hear this issue from all sides. But really, most importantly, from teen parents and not just young women, but from young men as well. But really, most importantly, from teen parents, and not just young women, but from young men as well. So this is a challenge, an issue for people to talk about. But I do support this effort, and I, I think it is the way to go. It's, it is making a decision to help people that don't have a chance unless they have the support they need. And like I said, for twenty years, I had a chance to really see all sides of this issue and see the challenges teen parents faced. But more importantly, what could we do to make a difference, both in ensuring that the great stories we hear about those who had children at fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are able to support them and go on and get an education and support those kids. But just as importantly, to find a way to prevent those pregnancies that put the challenges on young people. And to hear those stories is very powerful. So I just wanted to lay out for the members of the committee as well, I don't think we've talked about this as much, but Donna and I have had a long history of, long history of working on these issues, and I think trying to get to grips about what the right solutions are to address an issue that impacts the city of Lynn clearly as much, if not more than any community in the Commonwealth. So I think, I believe, and I'm supporting this, this is the right direction, recognizing the differences of opinions that we all face related to this, but I think this is the right thing to do for the committee, and I will be supporting the efforts of Lynn Community Health Center in making this a reality in the, in the city of Lynn.
Member Sadowite?
So where do we go from here? Because Member Attorney Nicholson was, was speaking about, this is just the beginning, but once you give them permission, they have permission, so they can start tomorrow. So how are, how are we gonna have a voice tomorrow with regards to, at least my concern about the, at least updating the consent form?
Member Nicholson?
Well, I think we could decide tonight when the, when the availability starts. I mean, I don't know that I, we've gotten a date from the Lynn Community Health Center as to when they expect it to begin this, the program, but that's something that we would, could start now.
Let's ask your question.
So just as a reminder, we're in this school as guests of the school. So if the school administration tells us we want a new consent form that reflects Councilman Sadowite's...
School committee member, not consulate, not yet.
School committee member Sadowite's concerns before we do anything, then we would do it. The school, the school administration essentially holds the final authorization on anything that we do.
Okay. If we can add that language into the motion, I'd be, I would be happy.
Member Castellanos?
So would it be appropriate to, to request a parent engagement plan? For, was that something that the health center, the school-based health center would be able to...
I'm confused on...
Well, in terms of just, we can roll it out when we want, is that where we...
No, I think my concern more is advising what, the transparency aspect. So the consent form should be updated to expressly state that they're gonna offer family planning services. Here, it's scattered, and it really doesn't give you the idea of what exactly they're gonna offer. Now we're specific to the birth, birth controls and condoms. So all I want is for the consent form to be updated to include, hey, we offer families planning services in our secondary education, school-based centers. And if I see this, I know, hey, my daughter's in the secondary school, or my son, I'm gonna speak to them about it just so they're comfortable with, with it, because they're gonna have the services available to them from the school, so I should be able to discuss this with them now. So that's all I wanted to add. Is, is that what you were speaking about, Jared?
Member Nicholson, and then Member Gailey.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that is totally fine with me to update the consent form. I think we can also decide now to approve a policy, and we can also ask for planning for what the rollout of that policy looks like, and have, you know, open houses or Q and A sessions. And I think we would ask the administration...
Okay, so rolling out, yes.
Yeah, and that would be a rollout of the policy.
So that's what I'm actually bringing up to light. So it's, it's actually workshops, develop, and conversations with the community. Because there's folks in here that would love to sit down probably to get more information about what... We're just sitting here in the public, but to get more personal, to get that information.
Yeah, and I, and I think we could approve a policy and request, and that would be the implementation of that policy.
Yes, and do we do that tonight?
We, we would approve the, I mean, it's up to, it's up to the committee, but we would approve the policies tonight and then request the administration to do that implementation that would have those open houses and solicit that feedback and participation.
Are you ever at open houses for schools? Yes.
Yeah, the nurse practitioners or the behavioral health therapists, they all go to at least one a year. They all try to go to the first one.
Member Gailey, then Member Ford.
So I think what Attorney Sadowite would like to see is on this sheet that, as you showed us here about the, you know, what is allowed in these communities, the condoms, blah, 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 all the way, whatever we're offering needs to be on this emergency form that they should sign. And I think that's the transparency you're asking for.
I believe that you're, we're on the same page now. Okay.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Member, Member Ford?
I think I agree with Mr. Nicholson that we should take a vote tonight based on the turnout, and they deserve to hear what we have to say. And whatever we want to do for wordage in the, in the contract, we should give them a date, say December first or December eighth or something like that, and just say, "Take the vote tonight, pending their updated of, of the contract by such and such a day."
And then having specific rollouts like Jared had, had, you know, over the next couple of months to inform parents, side effects, any concerns they have, they just know exactly, they can come to you and speak. So I can make the motion then, if that's fine? I make the motion? Okay.
Are you gonna answer something?
Oh, I was gonna, well, I mean, it's a little bit moot now, but we did have a, those monthly community evenings at Lynn Community Health Center. The theme of this month was actually birth control, and it was focused on puberty and development and things like that. And so was actually open to the public and parents.
On Union Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm talking about the neighborhood schools that the kids go to and parents are familiar with, and they want to see where these things are happening as well.
Yeah, no, I'm just answering that like she asked if I, and I said it was a moot point, but we did have one of those forms. Thank you.
With that, is there a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Lynn Community Health Center contraception, contraception availability plan to follow with an update to the parental consent form and administration develops rollout plan of such policy.
Second?
Roll call required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a request to extend renew and signing of lease agreement with the Food Project and the garden located at Ingles Elementary School.
Do you want to take a break first?
We'll take, we will, we will take a, a short break, two-minute, two-minute break. I would ask that everybody take their discussions outside the school committee room. We have more business to attend to. It's for riders.
The girls, yeah.
Good job.
Meeting is back in order, and we will go to the next item on the agenda, request to extend renew and signing of lease agreement with Food Project and the garden located at Ingles Elementary School.
Recommendation of the superintendent?
The superintendent?
Recommend approval. To be clear, this lease actually isn't up until February. But their Food Project, which is a wonderful partner of the Lynn Public Schools, would like to align this lease with, from a three-year to a five-year, and align it with the lease that we just signed for the garden that will be going in at WTI.
Then I'd like to make a motion to extend, renew, and signing of a lease agreement with the Food Project and the garden located at the Ingles Elementary School from two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-five.
Second roll call required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. And I'll be sending the copies of the lease for the members to sign.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. That's why they got iPads. I got a solar panel on my iPad.
Yeah, I don't know if they... Yeah. Solar panels.
You tell them.
Save a lot of money.
Oh, Jesus, this one popped out, oh, yeah.
I think you're getting quicker, man.
I'm getting better at this. Let's see if I can keep this pad.
All right, I'm gonna ask you at the next meeting.
That's last name, thank you.
It's a little warm in here.
Where's the pizza? Sheila?
Next on the agenda, is everyone signed?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is signing of the revised operating protocols that we discussed at the, at our retreat. And this is just a, this is just the memorialization or onto paper, the changes that we suggested at the retreat. Member Sadowite, and then Member Gailey.
I just wanted to speak on that. I, I appreciate the administration and the school committee and Mr. Mayor with, with doing stuff like that. The retreats are extremely important for us to get together and to brainstorm and to really get to build the trust between one another. And the changes that we made this year to the, it was the first-ever protocol that we had last year, and, and we saw where there were changes that were needed to be made, and, and we were on the same page. You know, the changes were minimal, but I think that the impact, it goes to show the direction of the Lynn Public School. And tonight is an example where we extend the open mic, we have parents come in, and then we give the additional time for everyone to speak, because point of views matter, because ultimately, it's the students that we, we care and we, and that's the first line of the, the protocol that we care so much about. So I just want to thank the administration, the school committee, my, my fellow committee members for, for everything that you're doing, as well as the Massachusetts School Committee.
Association.
Association of school committees.
I think they do a wonderful job hosting us with these events. Thank you.
Make a motion?
Member Gailey?
Oh, sorry.
Just...
I just wanted to see a copy, that's what I was asking.
Do you have it there?
Of the new.
Here it is.
And I, I was at the conference last week for the Mass Association of School Committees. It was very enlightening. There was a lot of great information there. And I know there's some things that, I'm gonna ask Robin, Robin also was, Robin Anis was also there for a couple of days. And there's a few things that we will send off as information that we received there. I think will be very helpful to the members of the committee, so we'll make sure that you all get a copy of that. But I, I echo Member Sadowite's comments as well, so a motion on the table?
Make a motion to sign the revised operating protocols.
Second, roll call required?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. I'll be sending the copies along for signature.
Where do these copies go?
Back to me.
We all get one.
Most one online. I don't know why there's five.
We all get one.
You get a...
Important data in this, then. Tom, you never sign it Mayor, Thomas, and McGee.
Oh, wow.
It's there.
It's my day job, Michael. Or nighttime job as well. Thank you. Next on the agenda is update on portable classrooms. Member Ford?
We had a meeting down at Lynn English on the twenty-third with Kevin McHugh, myself, Tom Strangie, and Andy Young from ISD. We've, we're gonna try and work it out. The money has to be spent by June thirtieth. We're gonna put six portable classrooms in the back of the building. Andy Young did a great job. He had a map of the building and also a cutout of, to scale, of what the size of the portable classrooms. And we moved it around until we found a spot in the back of the building on the Tracy Street side where we could fit the six portable classrooms. Basically, we take up about fifteen to eighteen parking spaces. And so now we have to go through, Tim, Tim Leonard is working with the design services. They do on the twenty-second of November. Twelve-nine, we select the designer, and then thirty to sixty days out, we'll go out to bid. Should be by the end of February. Hopefully, we'll get it all done by June thirtieth. I know you've had mayor, you've had further discussion at City Hall and...
We have, based on the timeline, and it's a very tight, tight timeline in terms of spending that money, but we are moving forward to, to pursue the portables as well as trying to fit it in within the timeline. And I think we're, we've got some other ideas on what we need to do if it's starting to be tight on how we can make it work, but we're committed to moving forward on these.
Just an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approve goals for the school year 1920. Superintendent Tuttwiler?
At our meeting, retreat, actually, on October 26th, we spent considerable time discussing goals for the current school year. What you received last Friday in your packets is an update, updated version based on your feedback. First, I want to reiterate that there's strong similarity between this year's goals and those for last year. While we certainly achieved some of the goals, the sameness reflects the continuation of our work in many ways. Second, as was communicated on the 26th, I want to reiterate that the goals are driven exclusively by our strategic plan. Of course, not all of the work happening as part of the strategic plan is reflected in the goals. Doing so would result in an unwieldy set of goals. Instead, what is reflected in the goals are priority foci for this year. Again, this year, I'm proposing a student learning goal for the district to increase achievement for all students. Toward that end, we propose to stick with the indicators of increasing achievement for two of our lowest performing subgroups, English learners and students with disabilities. Specifically, we endeavor to increase the percentage of English learners progressing toward English language proficiency from 46 to 50 percent. Relative to students with disabilities, we are shifting the goal language to align with how the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education accounts for performance. Instead of focusing on a gap closure measure, we are focusing on meeting targets. If students are consistently meeting or exceeding targets, ultimately, the gap is closing. Accordingly, for students with disabilities in grades three through eight, the goal is to meet targets for English Language Arts and Math. Finally, given the inextricable tie between attendance and student performance, we propose an indicator relative to meeting the chronic absenteeism targets in the student learning goal realm. I believe these goals are rigorous but can be attained. It will take professional learning, strategic and targeted focus, and dedication, all things I believe our team can effectively perform. We are again proposing four district improvement goals. Three of the goals reflect natural next steps related to our work begun and completed last year. Building on the identification of an SCL curriculum for grades K to five, we intend to engage a collaborative process to identify a SEL, social and emotional learning, curriculum approach, curriculum or approach for secondary schools. We have effectively addressed middle school overcrowding for the time being. We are turning our attention to the high schools. We're not focusing exclusively on overcrowding per se. Per the presentation in this space by Shannon Gardner, we are looking holistically at how, at high school and how to improve the experience by making early college, internship, and career and technical education opportunities more accessible. With a three-year strategy for increasing the racial and linguistic diversity of our staff, this year's improvement goal involves accomplishment, accomplishing significant year-one actions. Note that we've proposed a quantitative measure. Specifically, it calls for a 1 percent increase in, in the teaching staff of color each of the next five years, including this year. The fourth goal sets the table for our work in the realm of technology. Specifically, we intend to use this year to develop a strategy to build the foundation for increased infusion of technology and instruction. And finally, all goals, all goal sets call for an individual professional practice goal for me. This is a goal typically anchored in some sort of professional learning. I'm in my second of three years in the new superintendent induction program. As a matter of fact, I was there all day today. I found year one particularly helpful in developing and executing my entry plan and in the development of the strategic plan. Year two calls for readings and assignments mostly tied to making the plan come to life. As such, I've made my participation in this voluntary program and completion of all the work therein my professional practice goal. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Gailey?
Patrick, on the teaching staff of color, we brought up the fact that we might have an MTEL, MTEL tutorial program of some sort for people to train. I know of three, maybe four people that would like to sign up now. So, if I could get information about when that's going to go, when is it gonna be existing? I do know people that are interested.
So, that, that I think is a really important part of that strategy. We applied for a grant through DESI, and that's one of the features in there. And actually, I just communicated with our grant writer yesterday to check in on when we expect to hear back on that. So, it's any day now.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
These are great people.
Yeah, indeed.
Member Sadoway?
Again, I know that we had the retreat and we spoke about the goals, and it was good to see where we were at, what we were doing, and how we wanted those to progress later on throughout the year. It's, 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 are we ever gonna be able to do this before the school year starts and not in the middle?
Well, we're not in the middle.
Yes, sorry, sorry. I take that back.
So, if you recall, when Dorothy Presser from MASC was here, I asked, you know, are we kind of on track with what is, on what a typical timeline would be for doing this kind of work? And she said, you're right in the sweet spot. But I'm with you. I mean, the earlier that we can do, we can set the goals, I think, the better. You know, once these are approved, I then turn to principals, and we talk about how we're connecting, how they're connecting the work in their schools to the overarching district goals. Some of it has to do with when some of the data comes out. So, we don't, we're not able to, the CAP, what's, what's, yeah, we're not allowed to talk publicly about the MCAS performance until late September, I think, at the earliest, was Josh. Okay. So, it's really after that that we wanna, you know, how did we do last year? That's the point at which we can start discussing embargo. That was what I was looking for. I said CAP. It's not even close.
I think that the goals go directly to our district-wide strategic plan and where we hope to head. And in there, it's five years, right? So, I see that, you know, what you have highlighted for this year is addressed and so on. I'm expecting next year to be what we have for year two and so on. So, I like that we have at least a vision, and then we have the goal to go with it. So, these goals are something that I strongly support.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just in response to that, I think it's a great point about the timing. I think, last year, we had initially talked about having an initial discussion in August, and then understanding that the MCAS gets released in September and they're finalizing the goal. So, we can probably get there a little bit earlier if we have an initial conversation in August, even though the MCAS results won't be out until September. But, you know, like you guys have been saying, we should have consistency year to year. If there's drastic deviation, something's not going right, and therefore, we wouldn't have major surprises, which is true this year. And I agree. I think these goals are a great way to focus what we're doing. Obviously, we're doing so much more than what the goals are, but it's a really great way to, to lead and get everybody on the same page as to where the priorities are and what we can be excited about to be trying to improve and work on. And I also just want to say that I, that I think it's great that we're bringing real rigor to the goals and setting ourselves SMART goals, because I think that is ultimately the way to push ourselves to be the best we can. So, thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Yeah, I wanna echo my colleagues. I think the retreats were very helpful, especially the, there's a scope of the work that we're doing. It's very transparent. I think it was a lot of collective ideas and transparency with the process that was laid out in front of us. It's very useful, especially when, when we set up those SMART goals and the, just the strategy behind it. It's very, it's resourceful and effective. It's made the vision more clearer, concrete, like the step-by-step. I could see it as we communicate a lot of the issues that we go through on a day-to-day basis. It's very, it's important to continue that work and to really, to set that up. I think those goals that we all set up were really community-focused as well. I think we did a lot of listening, and I really appreciate the, you could see it in the work that we do. Very admirable superintendent and the leadership that, that worked on it, as well as my colleagues and the community stakeholders.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the goals for the school year 1920.
Second, second, roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the FY21 budget timeline.
Quickly, in your packets, you received a draft proposal of a timeline for the development of the FY21 budget. This timeline looks very familiar to the one proposed for the development of the FY20 budget. One notable difference is the date upon which the presentation of the FY21 budget is supposed to happen. We'd like to complete the process nearly two months earlier than the FY20. Again, the hallmarks of this process are deep reflection, thoughtful planning, clear and consistent communication, and timely feedback for all involved. What is more, the proposed timeline aligns with the early hiring agreement with the Lynn Teachers Union. Given the legislature's recent favorable votes on supporting districts such as ours, we're in a much more concrete place to plan on a more expedient timeline. I plan to keep the school committee apprised of developments related to the budget process as is necessary through the superintendent's report, but I welcome any feedback you have on this document.
Member Nicholson, then member Sadoway.
Just a question. Are you gonna use the same form that you used last time to solicit, or are there any changes to that form?
Potentially. I will share it with you certainly if we do.
Great, thank you.
Member Sadoway?
And I know that the retreat was not televised. It was obviously open, but one of the things that you shared with us was your forward-looking waterfall or map of what we're...
A look ahead?
Look ahead. This, this is good. Again, this is allowing us and the community to look ahead as to what we're gonna discuss. Gives them time for preparation. I like this. This is what we need to do more for the district so people can have the opportunity to have input. So, I like the look ahead. I like that you shared it with us. I know that a lot of you didn't know about that, but this budget development outline is a look ahead. It gives you specific dates, or, you know, they could change, but at least we have an estimate of what's taking place. And I like that it involves other people that are stakeholders in the district's success, principals, leaderships, administration, et cetera. So, again, I just want to thank you and reiterate that I know what to expect. Thank you. No surprises.
Does this require a motion to adopt, or is it just for information?
I think it's for information.
Okay.
It may change, it's subject to change, and then we'll be working closely. We'll be bringing back in Mike Bertino as well so that there is an interaction between both the school budget and the, and we are working to try and ensure that we do an early budget as well on the city side. Next on the agenda is superintendent evaluation. I think that is to get the completed evaluations that our fine school secretary has worked on putting together. Thank you. School committee secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. So, I think I can go through the, my understanding that I can, I will go through the evaluations and the scores on the evaluations. So, I will read through that as, so that the public can also hear. So, I'll go through all of them, at least on the scores, and then we can discuss or review what's, so the number one, professional practice goal, there was one vote, one for significant progress, and six that met, met the goals. Student learning goals, three found significant progress, four identified that the goals were met. District improvement goals, one significant progress, five met the goals, one exceeded the goals. On the instructional, on the indicators, instructional leadership, two were needs improvement, four were proficient, and one was exemplary. On management and operations, one needs improvement, four were proficient, two exemplary. Three, standard three, family and community engagement, two needs improvement, four proficient, one exemplary. Standard four, professional culture, one needs improvement, four proficient, and two exemplary. On the rate of overall summative performance, the five were moderate in terms of ratings. Oh, proficient, I'm sorry. It's proficient. Thank you. It's been a long evening so far. Proficient, so the rank was proficient, and the rate impact on student learning, five were moderate, two were high. Yep. Yep. I mean, that pretty much is the overview. I don't know if I have to go through the whole rest of it. I'd be happy to do that if people would like to identify that, but I think that is the overall summary and evaluation of the report. Is there a discussion? Would we like to have a chance to review this and discuss? Member Sadoway?
Thank you. Being able to see...
Yes, member Sadoway?
Being able to see what my fellow colleagues believe of your performance and the direction of the district, it's comforting, comforting to see that a lot of us are on the same page. You know, obviously, I'm not sure if you've seen this already, or if this is your first time?
First time.
First time?
I'm hopeful that you'll read and consume and digest what was said in this. I know that it's, it's, it's easy for us to tell you every meeting that, oh, this is a great thing you did, this is a great thing you did. To put the pen to paper and actually give examples and show where the data doesn't lie, and the work that you've done is acknowledged, and the improvement that we, we hope to see in the future is, is, is good. So, I know that we had the issue with the surveys that we gave to teachers, and some of it, the way it worked out wasn't how we hoped, where we heard that some of the principals were mad with what they read on how their school was running. I hope that you don't feel the same way and that you understand that this is to really help make the district a better place. And again, you met and you're proficient in, in your job, so we appreciate that. So, I know that you just got it, so it's kind of hard to ask questions on, on certain things. And we're just getting these things from our colleagues, so I might follow up with emails afterwards, if that's fine.
Yes, superintendent?
Two things. One, I believe, where'd Mary go? I believe this will be...
I think she's making copies.
On the, an agenda item on the 12th to finalize this, so...
Yes.
I think everybody's just getting this for the first time.
So, I think, yeah, so I think we can review it over the next couple of weeks and then have comments and a discussion related to this on the 12th.
Thank you.
Superintendent Tuttwiler?
One other quick thing as it relates to feedback. I think all feedback, whether it's complimentary or constructively critical, is an opportunity for learning. And so, I won't be mad if there's constructively critical feedback on one part of the work. If it's something that I disagree with and the opportunity is around communication, maybe I didn't do a good enough job communicating around whatever the thing is, or showcasing whatever the thing is. So, that's the orientation. So that's the orientation with which I'll read this.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Member Nicholson.
That all makes sense, and just as a refresher, we started this process, we kind of, we actually voted on what the dates would be and all that stuff. I just want, I had a question for attorney in my house in terms of making sure that we're complying with the open meeting law with regard to the steps that we're taking. Are we, we're complying based on the release of this document, is that...
Absolutely. It's dependent. It's gonna be done at an open meeting.
Right, right. And then, and therefore, this document is in compliance with that requirement. Great, thank you.
I think that's, my understanding is part of that was reading the evaluation scores at least, and there's obviously a lot more to discuss, but it's...
Right, I just wanted to make sure we're checking all the boxes.
Yep, no, it's a great question. So we will defer discussion on this until the 12th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is communication and information and superintendent's report. Superintendent Tuttwiler?
Yep, there's an enrollment report in your packets and...
Can I just ask a question on that?
Please.
Because we're always saying that the English went over 2,000, but by those numbers, can you explain to me how that would be that we, over 2,000? Because I don't see that in the enrollment.
I don't know who's saying that.
School itself is saying that.
So often, you know, one way that folks are miscalculating that is they'll, they'll add in the students who are enrolled at English but go to LEAP. That's maybe...
Which still doesn't bring it to 2,000.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
I don't know what to tell you.
Okay.
As folks ask me, I'd say that's actually not accurate.
Okay, great, thank you.
On we go. Each year, you should have this report in your packet also. We do a graduation report to the school committee. In addition to the discussion around quantitative data, we also talk about the effort to increase graduation rates and decrease dropouts. The prevailing wisdom in the preventative effort is that interventions begin far sooner than high school. We're fortunate that in our schools, we embrace that wisdom through Project Yes at Marshall and All Stars at Breed. Both are longstanding programs, 11 years and five years respectively, and they have shown notably impressive results from an empirical standpoint. I'm pleased to share that both programs have had a successful start to the school year. Both programs engage more than 50 students each, employ a research-based curriculum, actually called the All Stars curriculum, feature support by and participation from clinicians in the Lynn Police Department. I can speak at length about the program's features and activities, but I've long believed that the success of both programs is a result of the people who staff it. There's an undeniable intentionality around the relationship building and mentoring. The staff involved in the programs demonstrate exceptional expertise in developing and maintaining relationships. As a result, students feel more connected to school, are less likely to break the rules, are far more likely to attend regularly, and because of the connection to the school, are more classroom-ready. And we've got one All Stars grad sitting right over yonder. Would you agree? You listening? Okay.
First day.
Come on, I love that guy. Related to graduation... Okay, you got it, okay. Related to graduation, I'd like to provide some information on our five-year graduation data, and this was actually requested. Attached to the superintendent's report is a narrative set of graphics breaking down various aspects of the data. In this space, I'll provide you a high-level analysis. To be clear, the LPS five-year graduation rate dipped from 80.2 to 78.2. There are many factors that can push graduation rates in a particular direction. Peeling back the layers of the data, we have cause for celebration and cause for concern at the same time. As clear in the first graphic of this attachment is a steady increase in the five-year graduation rates among students with disabilities. This is really positive news. At the same time, there's been a pretty precipitous drop in the five-year graduation rates among English learners. The drop in graduation rates among English learners is commensurate with that for all students, meaning as the drop for English language learners happens, the all students also comes down. Logically, as the number of English learners increases in a particular cohort, the impact on the all-students data will be more significant. Case in point, in 2014, English learners represented 18 percent of the students in the fifth-year cohort. In 2017, the most recent set of data, English learners represented 24 percent of the students in the fifth-year cohort. The point here is not to place blame on any particular state-identified subgroup. The value in peeling back the layers of the data is to identify areas for celebration and areas in need of change and/or improvement. Opportunities for both exist in this data. This is not the space to present proposals or strategy for improvement. There will be a presentation on graduation and dropout, and an update on the conversation on high school design on January 30th. Both are germane to the topic. That is all. And I'll fix this before it goes up.
That's it for the agenda? Member Nicholson?
Just a really quick question about the, that, Attorney Sadoway mentioned the look ahead, and you mentioned here again the high school design on January 30th. Is there an updated version of that look ahead?
So it's on, the look ahead lives in a space similar to what most people know as a Google Doc. It's the word online that's shared between myself, Terry Callen, and Mary, and it changes all the time. So as I determine people's availability to do certain things, it might go on, or it might move to a different place. So what you received on the 26th didn't have either the graduation dropout piece or the high school design update.
Right. So how often...
It does now.
How often will we see the refresh, I guess?
I mean, I, how often will you see the look ahead?
Yeah, as it changes.
I mean, as often, I guess, as you would like. Maybe each meeting I can sort of give you a snapshot of, you know, the things ahead or the changes to the document, or just put a printed copy in your packets.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, perfect.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a few more things I want to say.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. We are adjourned.
It's actually early.
Early.
9:16.